Good evening, everybody. This is Steve Lineal, Chair of the City of Nashua's Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the December fourteenth, 2021 zoning board meeting. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third-floor auditorium of Nashua City Hall, 229 Main Street, and via Zoom at the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance telephone is available using the Zoom connection. Details. This meeting will not be streamed live tonight, but afterwards you can review a video of it at the city's website at nashuanh.gov/318/ctv. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case, followed by questions by the Board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. All participants should endeavor to comply with the timeframes of fifteen minutes maximum for the applicant and five minutes each for anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition or with questions. There will be on the Zoom screen a timer indicating how much time is left for each speaker. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashua bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any Board motion. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting, and we do have a quorum. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within thirty calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. So for this meeting, we have the following full Board members in attendance. We have myself, Steve Lineal, I am the Chair. On Zoom, we have Ms. Mary Ellen McKay. Here in the room, again, we have Jack Courier, who serves as our clerk, Mr. J. P. Boucher, and Mr. Rob Shaw. We also have the following alternate members in attendance. We have Mr. Jay Mancara, Mr. Nick Kanakis, and I don't know if Estatia Boras is on Zoom. I don't see her.
She won't be here tonight.
She will not be here. Okay. She's not joining by Zoom. Okay. Ms. Boras will not be joining us. In addition to the Board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, Deputy Planning Manager, Ms. Kate Poirier, zoning coordinator, and Mr. Matt Sullivan, Planning Department Director. Let us start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. For Board members participating by Zoom, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you, which is required under the right-to-know law, and state your reason for not attending in person. So, okay. Mary Ellen McKay.
Good evening. I'm present. I'm alone alone, and the reason I'm not here is I was potentially exposed to COVID, something I know Nashua has it, and I felt it more prudent to avoid any personal contacts for everybody's health.
Thank you. Jack Courier.
Present.
J. P. Boucher.
Present.
Rob Shaw.
Present.
Jay Mancara.
Present.
Nick Kanakis.
Present.
Okay, that's everybody. Alternates may fully participate in discussion, but will vote only if a full Board member recuses themselves or if there are fewer than five full Board members in attendance, but we do have all five full Board members here tonight. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. Before we get started, I see there are a lot of people on Zoom. I'm going to first request that everybody mute themselves unless you are called to speak, and when it comes to the comment, the public comment period, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom to indicate that you wish to speak. Depending on how you're using Zoom, this may be, you may have to click on the thing that says reactions first, and then it will say raise hand. I'm not entirely sure how it works on the phone, but that's how it works on a computer. Before we get started, are there any questions about the procedures that we're following? Not seeing any. So I will now read the first case into the record. The owner is Robin Dappa. Applicant is Sudip Pant. Address is L., that means land, Bowers Street, Sheet twenty-five, lots twenty-two through twenty-four, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table sixteen-three, for minimum lot frontage, fifty feet required, zero feet proposed, to construct two-family dwelling. This is in the RB zone, Ward seven. I see we have somebody stepping up to the lectern to make a presentation. Please give your name and address for the record.
Sure. Hello. For the record, my name is Doug Lees from Land Engineering and Environmental Services. My address is Sixth Sutton Place in Londonderry, New Hampshire. I am here, I'm the civil engineer on this project representing Robin Dappa for the proposed variance. As you may remember, he was here back in October for this request, and at that time it was suggested by the Board, requested by the Board, that he meet with the DPW and the town engineer to go over the proposal, to see what their inclination was. And we've had a Zoom meeting with the engineering staff, some of the engineering staff, on November, November first, I believe it was, and they indicated that they would prefer to see the road extended past the driveway, ten feet past the driveway, to give some room for the snow storage. So if you remember the previous plan, that the pavement came off the end of the existing road and just had the driveways swooped into the lot with no improvements for the roadway itself. And on the new plan, the proposal is to extend the road to twenty-two, twenty-four feet wide that it is, past the lot, it's supposed to now be thirty feet, so it would actually be a change to the variance request. The variance request that was submitted was for zero frontage where fifty is required. And the plan in front of you shows thirty feet of frontage being created by the roadway extension.
You said thirty?
Thirty feet, yeah. The road, driveway coming in is about eighteen feet wide, and because it comes in at an angle and we're extending ten feet, we ended up being thirty feet. So at that point, you know, we said, well, can we just go the fifty feet and not need the variance? But really, right after the thirty feet is where the lot, the right-of-way really starts to drop down in topography. It goes down almost at a three to one, a little bit steeper than that. So to extend the road the extra twenty feet, we would be bringing it fill and possibly have to put retaining walls, and the city wouldn't want to see retaining walls in the right-of-way, so it would have been really a lot more disturbance. And then, because the road has to go down, you know, less than ten percent, and the walkway's coming up, we would have a hard time keeping, maintaining the walkway. If you remember, there's an existing walkway that comes off the end of the road, and it goes down to Gillis Street. People used to, you know, to get between the two, and the kids use it to come to school. So, you know, when we looked at all that, we decided that we'd come back and ask for the variance to go thirty feet, which gives the roadway in front of the driveway, and then an additional ten feet for the snow storage and for the, you know, for the roadway in front of the house. And then the Jersey barrier that is there right now at the end of, at the end of our Bowers would be moved, you know, about five feet past the end of the new pavement. So there'd be ten feet of pavement and then five feet of grass in the Jersey barrier, so there'd be room to plow the snow. And it also enables the walkway to tie in and maintain the existing grade without having to, you know, adjust that grade, and really don't want to interfere with that walkway because it's, you know, it's a great, it's a great feature. I mean, it's, you can see, it could choose a lot. So I believe there was an email from Joe at Engineering saying that he, the concept of the plan was acceptable, and he had some engineering comments, some of the utilities, some of the sewer details, profiles. I started to revise the plans. I was trying to give them to him last week. He said he was putting together all the letters, so I might as well just wait so I can make sure I had everything on it. And I would have, but he wouldn't have had time to review the new plans before the meetings because it was, this is the letter that he submitted, I believe, today, was everything that we talked about at that November first meeting. So basically, I have a plan sitting on my desk, ready to resubmit. I didn't submit it because he said he was going to give a new letter. He said it would just be the same information, but I might as well wait to make sure that we had all the right information. So all those comments, just adding profiles, notes on the plan, details of the pavement patch, details of the new pavement. The stormwater, you know, is all contained on site. There's an existing depression on the east of the side of the property now, and we're filling on the west of the side, but we're maintaining the depression on the east of the side, so all the water will go back and still sit in that depression on this property, not go onto the neighbors' lots. So it's kind of unique because it has that self-contained drainage on it already. It's just three parcels, so there's enough room to keep it there. I know that was one of his comments, was for a stormwater letter, but, so that's, I know I have more time, but I mean, you've already had the presentation, you're familiar with the project, so if the Board has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. I don't want to just talk for the sake of taking up time.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that. Okay, any questions from the Board? Mr. Courier.
First, if you could lift that microphone up, just to borrow, it should come up a little bit. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's much better. So is your request actually tonight now for thirty feet or twenty feet?
It's for, it's to provide thirty feet of frontage where fifty is required.
Thirty feet of frontage where fifty is required. And then the last kind of bullet on the engineer's letter was about having a stamped engineering plan as part of the package. Would that be you, or are you going to be the guy who says?
Yeah, that would be me. I gave, I have a stamp, this one is stamped. I'm not sure if the one that was submitted wasn't stamped, but yeah.
Yeah, no, I just, it just wasn't, I wasn't sure if that was you or not, but it is.
Yeah, that is me. I'll be the professional engineer.
Yeah. And I just wanted to reiterate what I heard you say, because we had feedback from some downhill neighbors.
Yeah.
Butters last time about water running off the property, but I just want to reiterate what you said, that there's going to be no runoff coming off the property, it's all going to be self-contained.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other Board members with questions here in the room? I see anybody. Ms. McKay, did you have any questions?
No, I did not. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So if there are no more questions for the Board, from the Board, let's see, we have, I will ask if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application. And we'll first start with the people in the room here. Is there anybody in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Okay, not seeing anybody. If there's anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application, please use the raise hand feature so I can see it. I'm not seeing anybody doing that. Okay. In that case, I will ask if there is anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application here in the room. Not seeing anybody. Okay, how about on Zoom? Oh, was there one? Was there one? Okay. Please step up to the lectern and give your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
My name is Lynn Lawton. I spoke back in October, and my name was incorrectly documented on the, on the comments. I was listed as Lynn Bond. I live at sixty-two Gillis Street, but my last name is Lawton, L.A.U.G.H.T.O.N. I was listening to the gentleman presenting the information about requesting thirty feet instead of the zero that they were looking for. He did indicate that they were thinking about ending, pushing the road a little bit further, but he talked about the grade of the property and that it would have to have retaining walls and lots of fill and everything, and didn't think that the city would like that. My question is, and my opposition is, if they didn't want to put retaining walls to extend that road, the depth of that property in the slant and the topography of that lot, they're going to have to put lots of fill and lots of retaining walls in that area, and I find it very difficult to see how that one area is going to take care of all of the water runoff when you put in a unit. Number one.
We'll get that question answered for you.
Yep.
Do you have additional questions?
Yes. And then, as far as extending the road for the thirty feet and then moving that Jersey barrier down past to where their driveway would be, are they going to widen that upper portion that they're going to extend on Bowers Street to a full set, a full-fledged road? Because I don't know if there's enough space there, and that would be my concern. Because then the remaining portion of that pathway is where the kids walk up to school. Okay?
Is that it?
Yep, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thanks. May be seated. We'll get your questions answered. Is there anybody else in the room who wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Okay. And there's, I don't see anybody on Zoom. So...
I might just want to ask on Zoom, I just want to make sure on Zoom, I don't know if you specifically asked for it.
Well, I did ask. I said, on Zoom, is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? And I've asked people to use the raise hand feature. I've got it open here on my phone so I can see.
Okay.
And I don't see anybody using the raise hand feature. So if the applicant would come back and respond to the questions that were asked by Ms. Lawton.
Certainly, and thank you. Well, first, with regards to the retaining walls, the retaining walls on site, there are, there are a lot of walls on site. They're between three and four feet tall. There's three separate walls, but they're not in the towns, they're not in the city's right-of-way. And to put a retaining wall in the city's right-of-way would kind of block off the right-of-way and would be not normal, become a city, not a city problem, a city issue. If the retaining wall was built in the city right-of-way, then it would be something the city would have to be responsible for, whereas the retaining wall is built on the private property is something that the homeowner or the developer is responsible for. I don't, I didn't ask the city engineer if he would allow us to put retaining walls in the right-of-way. It's generally not allowed. So that's why we didn't pursue that, because it's, it's just not a general accepted, it's not a accepted practice to put retaining walls blocking off of public right-of-way. I believe one of his comments in his last letter was saying that nothing in this approval would prohibit the city from further using, future use of the right-of-way or extending the roadway. And if we put a retaining wall across to hold up the roadway, it kind of would become a prohibit, you know, prohibit future use. Her third comment was how wide the road was going to be. I believe the city standard is twenty-eight. The existing road is twenty-two to twenty-three, and the portion we're adding is going to be twenty-four feet wide. It's not going up to the full twenty-eight feet wide. DPW Engineering realized that it didn't make sense to have the last fifty feet of the road all of a sudden jug out and be six feet wider than the existing road. So it's going to blend into the existing road, and sort of fit within the right-of-way in between the driveways as an accessway or the exit way, I guess, on the other side for the school, the road that comes around behind the school, comes out across from the neighbor's house, right before where the work is going to be starting. As far as the stormwater on site, the, you know, the existing site drops off about twenty-five, thirty feet to a depression in the back on the eastern side. And we're leaving the depression on the eastern side, so that's where the runoff goes to now, and that's where the runoff's going to go to in the future. So when the runoff goes in there, there's an area where it will pond and soak into the ground. So all of the runoff from site, you know, the runoff from the roadway coming down, you know, from the side of the house is coming down, and we have it created so it comes into the depression, and we have a swell provided along the north side to bring it into the depression. So all the water will go into that depression and soak into the ground. That's where it goes now. It's a natural depression. It's a fairly good soil, and it's able to absorb the water, so it will be, we'll be able to absorb it in the future. And again, engineering will take a look at that when I submit to them. One of the things they wanted was a letter, so that will get some review by engineering when we submit to them.
Okay.
Question?
Questions from the Board? Yes.
My take on, one of Mrs. Lawton's questions was, and this is just my take, like the stability of the retaining walls. And when I went and looked at the property a couple times, it was back in October, November, have there been retaining walls put in since then?
No, no, they're proposed as part of the, as part of this, so they won't be put in until, you know, unless all approvals are obtained and building permits are pulled.
And, but it's your testimony that the retaining walls are intended to be there in perpetuity?
Yeah.
They're not, you know, have a shelf life or anything like that, and they'll be sturdy and last longer than all of us?
Yeah, no, they'll be designed, engineered walls. Four feet is the tallest one. The two of the walls are only three feet. They're three feet in their step, you know, seven, seven or eight feet between them, just to provide a terrace in the back.
And in general, is there a lot of fill that's going in, or is the house being built kind of down there where you walk in from the driveway? Because it seemed like it was, you know, the first floor of the house was going to be much lower than the street, but you'd be walking in kind of from the street level, but that was just my maybe thought on how the design would end up.
I'm going to have to ask you, if you speak, to speak into the microphone.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a look at the plan to make sure, get it clear in my mind. The first floor is about the same elevation as the street.
Okay.
So the driveway will come down a little bit, which, I mean, the grade is a little bit below the street. There'll be a little bit of fill. It's an asbestos site, so we don't want to excavate material, especially on that end, so there'll be a little bit of fill brought in, the driveway will be put in, and then there'll be a walkout in the back. There'll still be some fill below the back though, because the drop-off is, you know, a lot taller than the house. The house is going to be twenty-four feet. It'll just be down eight feet, and then there'll be fill brought in and come back to bring up the back. And that's why there's the two terrace retaining walls in the back. So six to eight feet in the back, in the back of the house. Then the front of the house is obviously right at grade.
And then one other question is, so the proposed twenty feet of road extension, I was curious, who pays for it? Is the applicant or the taxpayers?
The applicant will put it in.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I didn't have any other questions.
Anybody else on the Board with questions here in the room? Ms. McKay, did you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. So Ms. Lawton, you have, if you wish, five minutes to make any final comments, or you can just rest, as we say.
I'm set.
You're all set? Okay, very good. Okay, I'm going to enclose the public hearing and open the public meeting. So, Mr. Boucher, your comments?
There's been, obviously, more information tonight that's made it very clear as to the project and how the lot is going to be constructed. We have a letter here from City Staff Engineering on some of the comments that were made. We have a professional engineer in front of us who's testified to this plan. This is his plan. So with that, I think that I will support the application. Thank you.
Mr. Courier.
I too, in short, am in support of the application. I was uncomfortable with it when we first heard it, and I was uncomfortable because of the drop-off and how the street ended. While as a Board, we've approved lots with zero foot of frontage, in my recollection, when we've done that before, it just looked like it would work, and it has worked, but this, I was having heartburn with, with the way it dropped off. But with the proposal tonight, I, the engineer has answered my concerns, and I have confidence that it'll work, so I am in support of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I'm also in support. I think the, what's now proposed really takes care of, I think, the majority of the issues that had come up. I think by that extension, it takes care of basically the snow load for the plowing, the constraints of why not going the full fifty feet seem quite reasonable as far as providing the relief on the frontage versus essentially forcing the applicant to pursue the full extension of the road, which seems to be bringing no, no real benefit to the public by doing that. So all in all, I'd say this seems like a good, good solution for what's, this property is challenging. So I am in support.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara.
I'm also in support of the application where the reasons stated, and I think it's, they've done the most, I think, that they could to provide the necessary relief so that this property could be used, so I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Kanakis.
I think the applicant addressed all the concerns from the previous application, so I'm in support.
Thank you. Ms. McKay.
Again, my fellow Board members have said that we've worked with the city, and we're going to come to a status check today, and we'll try and start in support.
Thank you. And I'm also in support, I'm glad to see, the original proposal was, I was not happy with, but I liked the idea of extending the road thirty feet, and, and the city has looked at it and has made requests and requirements, and it looks like everything will, will work out well. So would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
Just to declare, we're going to change zero feet to thirty feet.
Yes, yes, please do.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Robin Dappa, owner, Sudup Kay Pant, applicant of L. Bowers Street, Sheet twenty-five, lots twenty-two to twenty-four, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table sixteen-three, for minimum lot frontage, fifty feet required, thirty feet proposed, to construct a two-family dwelling in the RB zone, Ward seven. This was tabled for the November twenty-third meeting. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. Given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant, cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Again, these lots are located at the end of Bowers Street on unimproved section of right-of-way for the city, and so that is the special condition of this property, and the fact that there is a deep drop-off in the city right-of-way, and to extend the street fifty feet, this time would have no benefit to the public to do so. We find it is within a sparring intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area of variance.
Thank you. And Mr. Shaw, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion?
I just wanted to make sure, I thought it was, just to make sure I have this, it was, what's being proposed is a twenty-feet road extension, so thirty feet is the relief they're looking for, and I think that's what we stated, but...
Yes, it was stated that the request is for thirty feet frontage where fifty feet is required.
Okay. Okay. And then, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Do I have that right? Everybody agree? Okay, very good. All right, are ready to vote? Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Currier, how do you vote?
Mr. Currier votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay, I'm in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your variance has been approved. Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Contact the planning department if you have any questions. Moving on, case number two. The owner is SAT Senior Limited Partnership and Alunach Associates Realty LLC. The applicant is Body Works Therapy LLC, address 76 Northeastern Boulevard, Sheet C, Lot 2024. Thank you for closing that door. Requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Item 102, to allow a therapeutic massage therapy business. This is in the PI Zone, Ward 9. Welcome, please give your name and address to the record and tell us what you'd like to do.
Good evening and thank you for your time. My name is Nancy Miller, and my address is 39 Schwinn Drive in Nashville, New Hampshire. I am a lifelong Nashville resident, and I'm also a small business owner of a therapeutic massage practice. And I'm here tonight to request a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1. Granting of the requested variance will not be contrary to the public interest because the proposed use is for a massage therapy practice in approximately 1,800 square feet of space. The area is a series of office units in an established development of office condominiums in which multiple and various uses, including chiropractic, physical therapy, dental, and medical, and the proposed use would be similar and complementary, and would not alter the character of the neighborhood or threaten public health, safety, or welfare.
Ms. Miller, you don't need to read the application. If you could just sort of give us a summary of what you'd like to do, because we have the application in front of us.
Okay.
If there's any additional material that you'd like to present, that's fine, but you don't have to duplicate what's in the application.
Okay.
Save us all time.
Okay. Well, I guess what I'd like to do is address the special conditions of the property.
Okay.
So the special conditions of the property are that it is a series of 13 units, units 23 through 40, and seven connected buildings on one lot that is four and a half acres. Most industrial buildings in the park industrial zone are single-building. Because of the way the code is interpreted by the city, I would have to meet the zoning requirements that 75% of the floor area of the unit be used by permitted uses in the industrial and manufacturing use category. However, even if the entire complex was considered one building, much like a single typical industrial R&amp;D building, my space would only be a small part. This property is unique in that it is the only type of research and development building in the zone consisting of multiple smaller condominium units in multiple buildings. While originally intended as a combination of research and development and office park, permitted use number 180, it has changed significantly to a wide variety of uses due to the changing economic and office space needs. Due to its unique layout, it is unlikely that most of the industrial and manufacturing uses would be feasible. I think this makes the property unique, and enforcement of the ordinance as to this office park and this unit bears no fair and substantial relationship to the purpose of restricting the uses so as to prohibit my type of use. Earlier today, I did provide some letters from my abutting neighbors that I believe you have that are all in support.
We do have those, yes.
Okay.
Anything else that you'd like to add at this time?
No, I'd be willing to answer any questions.
Yep, that's the next step.
Okay.
Questions from the board? Not seeing anybody in the room. Ms. McKay, on Zoom, do you have any questions?
No, I'm in favor.
Okay. We do have three letters in support. Each of these will be included in the minutes of the meeting, so I'm not going to read them all, but the first one is from Kevin Potzy from MVPT Physical Therapy and is in support. Second one is from Daniel St. Pierre, who is the owner of two units in this building, and he is in support. And the third one is from Alunach Mortgage Group, and they are also in support.
And I just want to add that Alunach, they are the owners of the building, that the unit that I'm looking at.
Okay, very good. So is there anybody in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody. If there's anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of the application, if you're on a phone, I determine you could use the more button, and then the raise hand is there. But I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand. Is there anybody in the room with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? And I'm not seeing anybody. Okay, so there was no questions or concerns, no need for applicant rebuttal, so you may have a seat.
Thank you.
I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Knakis, your comments?
Not much. I think it's fairly straightforward going, and I feel like it meets the variance requirements there's supported the neighboring properties and landowners, so I'm in support.
Thank you. Mr. Mccara?
I'm also in support, both for the reasons that Mr. Knakis stated, and I think the use itself is consistent with the character of the area.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I'm also in support, and I think Ms. Miller did a nice job of giving us the context and considerations for what makes this property unique and why this application makes sense. And I am in support.
Thank you. Ms. McKay? Any comments?
I couldn't get a question off. I'm in support for all the reasons mentioned, and I probably understand the terms, so I'm in support. That sounds like a pretty good nomination, but at least what's happening right now, so I'm supporting the application.
Thank you. Mr. Currier?
I'm in support, and as Ms. McKay was saying, it speaks volumes when the owner was also in support. We've had condominium complexes in this sense, like business condominiums at times in the past where abutting businesses have not wanted a variance because, you know, for their reasons they feel it would impede their business, but I agree with the applicant's testimony that this is in concert, and so I'm in full support.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I'm also in support of the application for all the reasons.
And I am also in support of the application for all the reasons my colleagues say. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of SAT Senior Limited Partnership and Alunach Associates Realty LLC, the owner, Body Works Therapy LLC, the applicant, at 76 Northeastern Boulevard, Sheet C, Lot 2024. The request is for a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 102, to allow a therapeutic massage therapy business. This is in the PI Zone. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. The applicant did note that this is a unique building, series of connected buildings that are, don't really lend themselves well to the kind of normally allowed and encouraged park industrial usage. This applicant, this applicant is also proposing a usage which is consistent with some of the other usages already going on in this condominium complex, and so it's reasonable and feasible for the applicant to pursue this other than the reason of any other reasonable to pursue other than the variance. It's within the spirit and the tenancy ordinance, there's no indication of any adverse effects on property values of surrounding parcels, it's not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served. With that, again, I move to approve this use variance.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Ready to vote? Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Currier, how do you vote?
Mr. Currier votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay, I'm in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. It's five to nothing. Congratulations, your variance has been approved. Please be aware, 30-day window of appeal. Contact the planning department if you have any questions. Moving on to case number three. The owner is 505 West Hollis Street, Unit 211 LLC. Applicant is Catherine Snyder, address 505 West Hollis Street, Unit 211. This is Sheet E, Lot 1387, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 110, to allow a real estate office in a multi-tenant building. This is in the PI Zone, Ward 5. Somebody on Zoom to present this case? I don't see any.
Anybody?
Okay, please give your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Catherine Snyder, Lot 35 Brooklyn Street, Pepperdine Estates, 16.
Okay, just give us a summary of what you'd like to do.
Well, thank you for allowing me to present my application to this esteemed board. I appreciate your time. I currently own the Snyder Family Group, which has been operating at 6th Avenue, 16th Street, Nashville, New Hampshire for the last three years. I purchased 505 West Hollis Street, Unit 211, in November 2012. I will be using this unit for my real estate company, which, that's what I'm using it for, I'm seeking a use variance to save money. There was a precedent set, Unit 206 was purchased two years ago, was currently operating as a real estate company, and I started going into the town, and it was approved by the planning board, so I'm looking for the sound courtesy of this board, and that's pretty much to say about this case. If you have any questions, I can sort of watch them.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Not seeing anybody in the room. Ms. McKay, did you have any questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
Is there anybody in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please use the raise hand feature. Not seeing any. Okay. In that case, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, your comments?
I'm in general support of the application. Again, I'm familiar with the area. Again, as stated, there was another application that we had approved, it's not the reason why I would approve this one. Again, I think the type of business fits into that location. There's been some varied businesses there before. I think, again, it just fits in with the area, so I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Currier?
I think Mr. Boucher's covered my thoughts. I'm in support.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I think I can just say ditto to my colleagues already.
Mr. Mccara?
Yeah, I mean, I would say the same. I'm also supportive, and really, the character of this property has been one of professional offices for some time.
Mr. Knakis?
Agreed.
Ms. McKay?
I think I almost just stated.
I also agree. I've been a customer of several of the businesses in this building, so I know it well. Okay. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owner 505 West Hollis, Unit 211 LLC. The applicant is Catherine Snyder. The address is 505 West Hollis Street, Unit 211, Sheet E, Lot 1387. The request is for a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 110, to allow a real estate office in a multi-tenant building. This is in the PI Zone. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. The benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. As noted, this property is very much professional offices, and that's exactly what this proposal is for, so it's very consistent with what is already going on at this site with the other tenants. It's within the spirit and the tenancy ordinance, there's no indications of negative effects on surrounding parcel property values. It's in the, it's not contrary to public interest, substantial justice would be served, and I move to approve this use variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Currier, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Ready to vote? Okay. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Currier, how do you vote?
Mr. Currier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay, I'm in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your variance has been approved. Again, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Please contact the planning department if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Next is case number four, and the owner is John J. Flatley Company, address 200 Innovative We previously denied a variance for a sign that they had requested, and they are back here, and the requirement, what we're supposed to do first is we make what's called a Fisher v. Dover determination, whether a material change of circumstances affecting the merits of the application has occurred, or that the application is for a use that materially differs in nature and degree from the variances for the proposed sign that were denied by the ZVA on September 28. So first, we're going to discuss this. We have, well, we'll discuss it among the board first. We do have two letters. One is from the applicant, or the representative of the applicant, Hankley Allen, and they are requesting that we say that this is materially different. And then we have a letter from Mr. James Ryan of 6 Clearview Drive, who is opposed. And both of these letters are going to be included in a minute. So discussion of the request, the Fisher v. Dover request. Mr. Boucher?
I do believe there is material difference from the first application. Again, asking for a similar type thing, but I think it's significantly different enough for me to move on with the case.
Mr. Currier?
Overall, I think it is substantially different, and I'm focusing on the square footage, I just want to throw out the number that was in our application. One of the numbers was a 70, over 77% reduction in size. I mean, I had a bit of a pause because I believe the board's biggest concern was the off-premises advertising, which isn't addressed here, but there's many aspects noted here that have gone down in size, so I hedged to the side of the fence that it is a significant change. Looking forward to hearing other opinions.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I found myself struggling with this somewhat, because I still feel like in most regards, the overall intent, the overall purpose is clearly unchanged, and it's just the scope of the height and the overall area. So the only reason, I guess, that I'm... So the only reason, I guess, that I'm willing to be more kind of erring to that same side, I think, kind of like Mr. Courier said, and just go ahead and provide the opportunity rather than try to argue that this isn't a significant enough change just because of those dimensional aspects. So I am okay, I guess maybe reluctantly supporting this as a sufficient change, but I still am not fully convinced. If there was a really strong argument that somebody else has, I'd certainly be interested to hear others.
Thank you. Mr. Mankara?
I would agree with the comments of my colleagues. The size and height really didn't get at the primary issue that were, that was of concern to me. Nevertheless, I think the reduction is in the area of the sign, and the height is so significant that it is a material change.
Thank you. Mr. Knakis?
I agree as well. I feel like it's a significant reduction in the size and height of the sign, as well as additional consideration to the brightness and lighting constitutes a material change.
Ms. McKay?
I think all of my colleagues have said to this point, I can't add anything to it.
Okay. Well, I'm going to disagree. I think that the reduction in size is only a small aspect of what we had problems with, the fact that it's an electronic message center sign which is not permitted. It's closer to residential area than is permitted, and the, and the off-premises advertising, which is, which we had a concern with before. So to me, making a, making the sign a bit smaller, or even significantly smaller, doesn't, to me, make a material change. However, that's, everybody else feels differently, so we're going to take a vote on it. So we're going to take a vote to see whether this request meets the Fisher v. Dover regulation, determination. And if we say it does, then we will proceed to discuss the variances that were requested. Is everybody happy with that? Mr. Shaw, what do you say?
I'm assuming we should do this in a form of a motion?
In a form of a motion? Okay. Okay, would somebody, well, Mr. Shaw make a motion, yes?
I'll make a motion on behalf of the owner, John J. Flatley Company. The address is 200 Innovative Way, Sheet A, Lot 798. And this is, this motion is regarding whether a material change of circumstance affecting the merits of the application has occurred, or that the application is for a use that materially differs in nature and degree from the variances for the proposed sign that were denied by this ZVA on September 28th. The motion I'm going to make in that regard is that the board does believe that a material change has occurred regarding the physical dimensions of what's proposed for the height and the overall area of the sign, and that this is sufficient to allow for the case to proceed with the specific area variance request that is then before us. So again, moving that there is, to approve that there is a material change of circumstance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Boucher, thank you for your second. Okay, ready to vote? Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay, I'm in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote against. That's four to one. So Fisher v. Dover was granted. So we will proceed to discuss the requested variances, which are, from Land Use Code Section 190-103, Table 10310, first, to maximum sign area, 150 square feet permitted, each of two, each face of dual-sided billboard sign proposed for 150 square feet each for a total of 300 square feet, two, to prevent the proposed billboard, proposed billboard sign to have an electronic message center where electronic message centers are not permitted, and three, variance from Land Use Code Section 190-103 D2B, to allow a billboard 235 feet from a residential zone where a minimum of 400 feet is required. This is in the PI zone, Word 8. So, good evening. Please state your name and address for the record and walk us through your application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is John Sockel from Hankley Allen. My address is 997 Ocean Boulevard in Hampton, New Hampshire. And thank you for the Fisher v. Dover vote. And, you know, after the first hearing, or the original hearing on this application, we went back and thought about the comments the board members made, some relating to scenic vistas when you drive into the state of New Hampshire along the, along the highway, and other comments about the fact that off-premises advertising might not be appropriate here. But most of those comments about the off-premises advertising, as reflected in the notice of decision, are related to the overage of the sign, the amount by which it exceeded what was allowed under the zoning ordinance. And I thought, my sense of the board, and as reflected in the notice of decision, is that they thought it was just, the board thought it was just too big for what it was doing. But I didn't address the off-premises sign issue in my Fisher v. Dover letter, because I don't need a variance for off-premises use at this location. The off-premises use is allowed under the Nashua zoning ordinance. So that really wasn't anything that I needed to address in our change of application. So the three variances I'm looking for are electronic message center, which really, the board did not seem to have any material questions or concerns about, at least during the first hearing. It won't be flashing, it won't be animated, it changes crisply, it adjusts to ambient light, it won't be too bright. So I need, I need, I need a variance for electronic message centers, which are not allowed at this location. I need a variance for sign-size panel, size of sign panels. The ordinance allows 150 feet. We have two panels, each of which are 150 feet. And we have two rather than one single, is so that there's one facing north, and there's one facing south, not one big sign facing the highway. And we're doing that, one to improve readability by motorists, and two to screen it away from the residential properties across the highway. So that's, that's, we need a variance for that. And then we need a variance for proximity to the residential neighborhood across the highway. The ordinance requires 400 feet from the zoning district boundary line, and we don't mean it because the zoning district boundary line is in the middle of the Daniel Webster Highway. But the sign is located over 800 feet from the nearest residence, and so we need, technically need a variance for that. So it's laid out in the application, but I think the applicant has done a really good job in listening to the board and addressing the board's concerns. Certainly is reflected in the notice of decision and in the minutes. And I'd be happy to answer questions, but it's, you know, the, other than the size and the height, it is, it is a lot similar to the original variance application, and the board's biggest problems were related to the size and the height.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Mr. Courier?
Well, I guess, you know, my, one of my comments from before, as I still feel about, like, this view shed, you're coming over the border, and, and, you know, clearly an electronic message center, you know, you know, you don't have to get up on a ladder and change anything, and I hear your argument loud and clear about for this position, but I, I see those other EMCs that I go by every morning to work in Massachusetts, you know, are drastically brighter. Now, I understand, you know, I read loud and clear that you have the automatic dimming, but it's, it's very predominant, and, and it's, it's just, I struggle with that, and I feel it's, I'm feeling consistent like before, that it's not in concert with coming over the hill into the, into the Gate City and into the Granite State. And it's not really a, I guess I'm not providing a question or a challenge, I'm just providing my opinion, which I think was pretty much the same as it was before, a smaller sign, but it's, it's where I'm right now. Feel free to.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to comment on that if I could. I drove the highway this morning a couple times because I wanted to get a feel for the vista that you were concerned about and had spoken about at the original meeting. And, you know, as you drive into New Hampshire, before you get to the site, I think there is a vista of some, some hills or mountains off to the left. Then, as you travel up in between Exit 1 and 2, and approach where the sign is located, you can't really see any, any vistas or mountains in either direction. As you get past the sign and go a little further north, you can see some hills and vistas off to the right or east. So based on my drive-through this morning, at the location of the sign, off to the left, you're looking at a ledge outcropping, and off to the right, you're just looking over, over some highway or some land that trends down below. And then as far as just being out of context, this, we're now doing a height of 30 feet. The Radisson Hotel sign is, let me get this right, one of the two hotel signs is 60 feet, and one of them is not, the other is 90 feet. And the other two billboards we spoke about on the east side of the highway, those are 672 square feet. And our sign is going to be dramatically smaller than those two signs. Much less obtrusive, much less aesthetically unpleasing. It's going to be a small, neat, nice, electronic sign.
Okay. Anything more, Mr. Courier?
Uh, well, no, no, I guess.
Mr. Shaw?
I don't think this was covered previously. I wasn't at the original, the first hearing. But was there any consideration by the applicant for doing a non-EMC sign?
The strong preference would be to have an EMC sign because of the ease, the convenience, and frankly, the applicant believes they look better now than non-EMC signs.
Okay.
But yes, it was, was considered, and we believe this is a superior choice.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mankara?
I wonder if I could ask the applicant to address the relationship between this sign and the overall usage of the property, if any?
So the Flatley Company owns about 300 acres of property. The sign is on a small piece of that property that's separated from the balance of property. It's on the east side of Terra, Terra Boulevard. And there's not much particular use for this particular area where the sign is located. That's why the applicant thinks it's an excellent location for the sign as proposed. Now, the use of the property, it's going to be, you know, there's multiple uses, and there's plans for future uses. And as I've said in the application, some of the sign will be for on-premises uses. Other, other parts of the sign that it's in use will be for other Flatley Company uses that are nearby but not on-premises. And some of it will be for completely off-premises, off-Flatley property uses as well. And again, I know we talked about this in the first initial hearing, but the off-premises aspect is, is allowed under the zoning ordinance at this location, and there's, there's two others on the east side of Daniel Webster Highway, just a little bit north of this site.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions in the room? Ms. McKay, did you have any questions for the applicant?
At this time, I was just talking about the sign, and I felt a bit of a pain, but at this time, I don't have any.
Okay. Thank you.
Another thing I wanted to mention is just, there's a very narrow view angle, the way the signs are angled towards the highway. It's really going to be seen by motorists driving north and south. It's not going to be seen by people across the highway. And that was done, again, for two reasons. One, to improve the readability when, for a much smaller sign that was originally proposed for people traveling north and south. And two, so we didn't have a sign directly facing the residential district across Daniel Webster Highway from the location of the sign. So each sign panel complies with 150 square feet. But we did propose two signs totaling 300 square feet. So one could be viewed north, and one could be viewed south. And I mean, the electronic messages signs, I don't, you know, I don't know if they look brighter than a billboard sign, but if this foot candle is proposed, this complies with dark sky recommendations and the like, and the brightness of the sign dims, dims and brightens as the background ambient air brightness changes.
Mr. Courier?
I think the number in the application was 0.3 foot candles.
At a 250-foot linear feet. Yeah, if I mispoke, I apologize.
I mean, as an engineer, 0.3 is generally a small number to me, right? So it, but I got to tell you, I don't have any context as to what that is. I'm not, it's not really a complaint, I'm just saying, it's, while the data point seems small, I, I, I don't know how to put that in the context really of anything other than it's 0.3. If there was somebody who could enlighten us on, or me on that, I'd appreciate it.
Could I have Doug Richardson from the Flatley Company speak to that point?
Sure.
Please give your, your name and address for the record.
Sure. It's Doug Richardson, John Flatley Company, 45 Dan Road, Canton, Mass. In terms of foot candles, a good comparison is the design standards used by the city of Nashua and what's being practiced for parking lots. Parking lots, especially retail, are an average of one foot candle minimum. Car dealers are about two to three foot candles. This is a third of a foot candle, and the requirements in the town is that nothing under 0.2 comes off of a parking area, and we're at 0.3. So it's a very low level of light. And even if the ones down in the south in Massachusetts are not properly being utilized for the adjustment, we are having the automatic adjustment, and we certainly would work with the city of Nashua in terms of making those adjustments as we move along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the board? Is there anybody in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on the Zoom call who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Please use the raise hand feature. Not seeing any. Okay. Is there anybody in the room with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application?
Yes.
Not seeing any. Is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? I see a raised hand from David Deacon. So unmute yourself, give your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes. So, unmute yourself, give your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes. Thank you, okay. You can use the feature to lower your hand, Mr. Deacon. Ryan King, you have your hand raised. Please give your name and address for the record and tell us what you'd like to know. Thank you, we'll get that answered for you. You can lower your hand if you are done. I don't see anybody else with a hand raised. We do have a letter I mentioned before from James Ryan of Sixth Clearview Drive, and he is opposed to the sign. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but he believes it will be distracting and should not be deface of Nashua greeting travelers to the city or the state. So, the applicant will please come back in five minutes to respond to the questions from, that were, that were raised.
Thank you. A couple of things on the points the people raised, and I thought they were good comments. I am not an ambient light expert, but I did do some reading about electronic message centers and electronic message boards when I got involved with this. And there is a, there is an organization called the International Sign Association, and it has all types of recommendations for electronic message signs. And there is a fairly large document about their recommended brightness, studies they've done to see if EMCs contribute to distracted drivers or not. And, you know, I'm summarizing this, but, you know, based on the studies they've done, there is no evidence that electronic message signs that comply with their guidelines cause an increase in distracted drivers or traffic accidents. We have not done a traffic study in the area to see how many accidents there are. But again, our sign will be static. It will change no more frequently than every five seconds. When it does change, it will just flash on, flash off. It'll not be flashing, it will not be animated, it won't be distracting. For any given motorist, when they see it, it's going to be, look like just a regular sign. And as far as a proliferation of them, one, we think they're better looking than the billboards that you see elsewhere. They're clearer to read, the light adjusts to the background light conditions. And, you know, Carter can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's a thousand-foot separation between billboard signs under the Nashua ordinance. So, I mean, however they proliferate, they're not going to be closer than 1,000 feet from each other. And so, it's really phones and text messages that cause distracted drivers and not these types of signs.
I did have one question, I didn't, don't remember seeing it here. Is the intent to display the three lines of text that the ordinances allow for EMCs or where, where the graphics?
We would, we're proposing to allow graphics but not animation.
Thank you. I will, you ready? Oh, yes, that's true, okay. Mr. Deacon or Mr. King, one of you, if you wish, may have five minutes to make a final statement. You don't have to. Raise your hand if you're going to do it. Mr. Deacon, I see your hand up first, so go ahead.
Yes, I'm just curious, as far as the distracted driving, I can totally see how that could, you know, be a factor. Well, we're not denying that that contributes to distracted driving, but that's what they're going to say. But at the same time, I stand, this is all about, we're not driving to New Hampshire as a bright, you know, billboard, that's all. And I just said, you're going to see a precedent, and then you're going to have all these other places where they're going to appear, and so you look like Las Vegas intended, so that's all. I'm just trying to, you know, keep my head for beautiful, the way it is. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. King, we only allow one person to speak at this point, so I'm afraid you put your hand down. So, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Kanakis, your comments?
I was previously in support of the application the first time this came before us. I'm still in support of it again. I think the applicant took care to minimize views from the residential district, which was one of the major points. We've significantly reduced the sign, which it was the other sticking point that we can consider. No off-premises advertising was something that the board had concerns on, but I don't feel like that's something that we can deny, seeing as that's allowed within this district. So, it's on that, I'm in support of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara?
Yes, I would say I'm closer to support of the application. I think I would dissect it in that when it comes to the 300 square feet, I really do perceive each 150-foot area to be essentially the same sign. I can see the logic in basically creating a V shape versus a flat, and so I can see that argument and can be convinced that that request is reasonable, although I'm open to hearing other viewpoints on that. With regard to the setback from the residential area, from the residential zone, given the fact that the zone line is in the middle of the turnpike, and that the turnpike is, at this point in particular, you know, vastly wide, I can see a reasonable argument that the, you know, relief from that setback from the residential zone is reasonable. Where I'm stuck is the electronic messaging component. I do not personally have a problem with electronic message signs. I do not believe they are hazardous. New Hampshire DOT puts them all along the highways. However, the city of Nashua has decided in its zoning ordinance not to permit them. And to me, I don't see any compelling reason that's been brought forward as to why they should be permitted here. So, I can accept the argument on the other two points, but not on the electronic messaging.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I'm at an extremely similar spot as Mr. Minkara. I agree as far as the dimensional aspect. I think that similarly, the V-shaped nature of the sign and looking at that as essentially functioning as one 150-square-foot sign, even I don't love it, but I think it's reasonable and I think it makes sense, and you're really not going to generally see both parts of the sign in a way that would be readable at once anyhow. And likewise, that distance. My big issue, and I've been, you know, I've noted this many times, is that, and I even can agree that these days that the EMCs with graphics can provide a really nice, sharp look and probably will function in many ways better than a traditional billboard sign. My issue remains that the city has, in the legislative body, has, Board of Aldermen has had plenty of opportunity, we've spoken about it many times here, to reconsider the land use code to allow graphical EMC signs in the city of Nashua, which it has chosen not to do thus far. And I remain just opposed to that for that pure and simple reason that it's not this board's job to be allowing those signs when the city has deemed that those signs are not allowed anywhere. So, for that reason and no other reason, I cannot support an EMC sign with graphics, even if I think in some regards they're better. I do not feel that the code allows for this board to supplant the wishes as defined in the code. So, I am not in support of the EMC as proposed.
Thank you. Mr. Currier?
I'm okay with variance number three, the distance. I think for the rationale that was very well captured by Mr. Minkara. I too struggle with the EMC. I mean, and I'd like to first say that I have every confidence that this applicant would live to the commitments if this were approved, but the problem that I've seen over the years is applicants don't live forever, and they sell. And the next person is not the applicant, and the city has consistently had trouble with EMC signs after the approval. And that, it's hard for me to let that go. I also think of this large bit of land here owned by the Flatley. I'm not, I don't see the connection between the EMC and is, would, would there be some problem or land-taking or some denial of some right to use the land? The land is perfectly viable for PI zone, that's what it was bought in. I don't see the EMC as being needed for that purpose. I could see it for bringing in a lot of profit for other things, but not for the land use that it's there for. So, I don't find support for the EMC. And as, in terms of the overage, I guess I'm not persuaded that 100% overage from 150 to 300 square feet is needed. I mean, the traditional PI sign is like right across the street, Lockheed Sanders for many years, or BAE Systems. It's a fixed sign because it's a PI zone and you're not having specials on Christmas trees sort of thing. So, I struggle with one and two, I'm okay with three, that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I was in support of the application last night I was here, and I continue to be in support of the application.
Thank you. Ms. McKay? Thank you. I too find the electronic message sign, which is not permitted in this zone, although it is permitted elsewhere in the city with certain limitations, to be inappropriate. I note that not too long ago, we denied to the Grace Church on Spitbrook Road an EMC for much the same reasons as Mr. Shaw pointed out, in that the Board of Aldermen have had many opportunities to relax the rules, and they've chose not to. And while our purpose here on the ZBA is to permit reasonable excursions from the zoning code, our purpose is not to rewrite the zoning code. And I don't find that an EMC is a reasonable use here. I don't have a problem with the distance from the residential zone. The size requirement, the size specification bothers me, you know, a little bit, being 100% overage, and there's already two large signs in this, in this area. So, I would be inclined to vote against this proposal. Do we want to consider each of these variance requests separately? Because there is kind of this mixture of opinion, I think that would be the better thing to do. So, I think we'll start with variance request number one, which is the maximum sign area. Would somebody care to make a motion on that one? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
Make a motion on behalf of the owner, John J. Flatley Company. The address is 200 Innovative Way. This area variance is for maximum sign area. Actually, let me note, it's for relief from land use code section 190-103, table 103-10. Maximum sign area is 150 square feet permitted. Each face of a dual-sided billboard sign is proposed for 150 square feet each for a total of 300 square feet. The variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. The primary argument made by the applicant is that the two signs will essentially be in a V shape to allow for better viewing from the north and southbound traffic and won't really have concurrent visual at the same time. So, in most regards, perhaps not all, the functionality will be more like 150-square-foot sign only. So, it would be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no indications of negative effects on surrounding parcel property values. This would not be contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served. I move to grant this area variance.
Okay, Mr. Boucher, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Currier, how do you vote?
Mr. Currier votes in denial of the motion.
Okay, Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay is going to vote in denial.
Okay, and I, Mr. Lionel also vote in denial. So, we need, we're going to have to make another motion to deny. Mr. Shaw, would you, would you do the honors, please?
Sure. I'll make a motion again for John J. Flatley Company, 200 Innovative Way, Sheet A, Lot 798. The request is for a maximum sign, sorry, relief from land use code section 190-103, table 103-10. Maximum sign area where 150 square feet is permitted. Each face of a dual-sided billboard sign is proposed for 150 square feet each for a total of 300 square feet. The board believes that this area variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, and that there is not a special condition of the property that requires the sign to exceed the allowed square footage as of the 150 square feet, and that the reasonable use can be found by what is allowed, that it's not in the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There is no indication of negative effects on property, surrounding parcel property values. It would be contrary to public It would be contrary to public interest and substantial justice would not be served. And so, therefore, I move to deny this area variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Currier, thank you for your second. Discussion of the motion. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in denial of the motion.
Are you, are you in favor of the denial or are you against?
I'm against the denial.
You're against the denial?
I'm voting similar to how I voted the first time.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I just made the motion for logistical purposes.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Currier, how do you vote?
I'm in favor of the denial. So, just so we know in the record here, Mr. Shaw has voted not in support, correct, the motion to deny, and I vote in support of the motion to deny. So, I think I've got that right.
Yep, okay. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes not in favor of the denial.
Okay. Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor of the denial.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor of the denial. Okay, that's three to two. The denial passes. Next, we have request number two to permit the proposed billboard sign to have an electronic message center, where electronic message centers are not permitted. Mr. Shaw, thank you for your making a motion.
This motion is on behalf of the owner, John J. Flatley Company. The address is 200 Innovative Way, Sheet A, Lot 798. This request is also covered by land use code section 190-103, table 103-10. To, in this case, it's to permit the proposed billboard sign to have an electronic message center, where electronic message centers are not permitted. The board feels that this variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property and that there is not special condition of the property that warrants an EMC sign and so that there is a reasonable use through the allowed non-EMC signs. It would not be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance and I'll strongly note that that especially with regard to graphical EMCs are not allowed by the City of Nashua in any usage and that EMCs are only allowed by code to have the three letter, three lines of code text type of display. Again, there's no evidence of any negative or any effects on surrounding parcel property values. It would be contrary to public interest and substantial justice would not be served. And so, therefore, I move to deny this variance request.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Currier, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor of the denial.
Okay. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor of the denial.
Mr. Currier, how do you vote?
Mr. Currier votes in favor of the not, the denial.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes not in favor of the denial.
Okay. And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor of denial. It's four to one. That request is denied. Okay. Mr. Shaw, would you care to do number three?
Sure. Again, this is for John J. Flatley Company. The owner is 200 Innovative Way, Sheet A, Lot 798. This request is for variance from land use code section 190-103D2B to allow a billboard 235 feet from a residential zone where a minimum of 400 feet is required. This is in the PI zone. The area variance is needed for the, to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the, than this variance. It was noted that especially the residential zone demarcation is in the middle of the Everett Turnpike and that the actual distance to actual residential properties on the other side of the, of the turnpike is significantly more than the 400 feet that is required. So, therefore, it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no identification of any negative effects on surrounding parcel property values. It would not be contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served. And therefore, I move to approve this area variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Boucher, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Currier, how do you vote?
Mr. Currier votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, votes in favor. That's five to nothing approving variance number three. So, mixed congratulations. You won one and lost two, unfortunately. You do have thirty days to file an appeal and ask for a rehearing request. Please contact Mr. Falcone Planning Department if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Are we, are we good to continue?
Take five minutes.
You want to take five minutes? Okay.
The owner is John J. Flatley Company, applicant. Applicant is Attorney Gerald Prunier. Address, El Dozer Road. Sheet A lots 58, 768, 67, 68, 990. Sheet 132 lots 185 and Sheet 114 lot 231. Requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-115 to work in a critical wetland and wetland buffer for the development of a conservation subdivision consisting of 58 single-family homes along with associated improvements. This is in the R-18 and R-40 zones, Ward 8. I understand there is a lot of interest in this case. I want to remind everybody that what we are here to discuss is specifically the request to work in the wetland. It is not traffic, it is not anything else that might be part of this development. That would be an issue for the planning board. So I'm going to be fairly ruthless about keeping questions and discussion germane to the request, which is working in the wetland buffer for development. There will be many more places, I'm sure, that there will be other concerns can be brought up. But not tonight. Attorney Prunier, welcome. Give your name and address to the record and walk us through the wetlands work application.
Happy holidays to everyone. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney with offices at 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashua. I have with me this evening Chad Brandon, our engineer, and Kevin Walker from the Flatley Company. The location of this, the work that's being done is up off of Dozer Road, which is along the Daniel Webster Highway in the southern part of the city. Shadow Brook and Spindelwick Circle. It goes up into that particular area, shown on the plan. The only area that is being worked in as far as tonight is concerned, the wetlands, as you see, the two wetland crossings and so forth. We have been to the Conservation Commission. They've held meetings on it, they've gone out, looked at the property. And I believe that you probably all have in your file a letter from the Conservation Commission approving the work to be done, subject to five conditions, which we agree with. And in fact, most of the conditions have already been done and the plan submitted, redone and submitted to the planning board. And as I've indicated, my client has either done or will comply with those five conditions. As far as the special exception is concerned, it is listed, the wetland work is listed in the Table of Uses in the Matrix System. As far as public utilities, the requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system in the area. The character of the neighborhood, the requested use will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or the immediate area that's involved with the development. As far as that's concerned, it's a residential area that we're involved in, it's a residential area that is zoned and the construction is going to be only residential use as far as that's concerned. There are special conditions that are applied for the particular area. There are nine of them, as well as the conditions that were imposed by the Conservation Commission. The nine of them have been included in my request. If you want, Mr. Chairman, I can read them or we can, I'll move to have them incorporated into the record so I don't have to.
You don't have to read them again. They will be incorporated in the record. So Attorney Prunier has said that all nine of the wetland special conditions have been agreed to.
Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be.
Questions from the board? Not seeing anybody in the room. Ms. McKay, did you have any questions?
Well, I said I do not.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this application for working in the wetlands buffer? Not seeing anybody? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application for working in the wetlands buffer? Okay? Is there anybody in the room who has questions, concerns, or opposition to the request to work in the wetlands buffer? Okay, I see the gentleman in the front row. Please come up to the lectern, give your name and address to the record, and you have five minutes.
My name is Eric Frederick. I'm at 14 Shadow Brook Drive. And I have a question about Impact Area 1 specifically. Is the plan available to be modified to eliminate the need to impact Area 1?
Your question, we will gather them and then Attorney Prunier or one of his representatives lands. I didn't fully understand what you asked. Would you say it again?
Impact Area 1 involves having a road extended off of Shadow Brook Drive at the corner of Spindelwick and Shadow Brook into the road running into or towards the Daniel Webster Highway. Is the plan available to be modified to eliminate that need for that road?
So you are asking if they could modify the plan to eliminate the road that crosses the wetlands in Area 1?
Yes, that is correct.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Okay, next person I saw in the room with a hand up, second row. Please give your name and address for the record.
Joe Backit, 88 Spindelwick Drive, Nashua. So I mean, I had a lot of questions. You're limiting this particular meeting to the wetlands. What's changed between the last time this came before this board and now?
This particular request hasn't come before the board before.
This developer, I thought, tried to develop this land in the past.
We have seen different development requests in the past, but this wetland buffer request is something that's new to us.
So the prior request to develop this land didn't involve the wetlands?
Mr. Flatley, do you want to have a comment?
Mr. Chair, this particular property has not been before this board before. This gentleman might be speaking about a development. This is by.
Can you get to a mic?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't think there was a mic there, sorry. Because it wasn't picking up very well.
Okay, I think this gentleman might be speaking about some property that's south of the existing Tara Heights Apartments that did come before this board a couple of years ago and was denied. But that's about 3,000 feet south of this proposed development.
Because we bought the property about a year ago, September 2020. And I was shown an email, and I forget who it was, somebody from the town, saying that the proposal to build behind us, you know, was denied and wasn't going to come up again.
This area, this lot or series of lots has not come up before us before. This is a new request.
Okay, so if we have wetlands and they're protected, why would we consider now saying that it's okay to go ahead and do this?
There is, it's very common to have requests to work in wetlands buffers. And the Conservation Commission usually has stipulations for how to best do that. It's not a case of you can't ever touch the wetlands, but you have to balance the wetlands with some, try to do minimal disturbance.
And that opens up a whole, right, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, but that opens up a whole host of questions to me. The gentleman who made the proposal said it's not going to affect the neighborhood. Is that something I can raise or no? Was part of his comments?
Do you have questions about the wetlands?
I did, yes. Why we would consider it? And your answer to me opened up a whole host of questions, that there are considerations that can be made to change that rule.
Well, it's not to change the rule, but it's to provide a special exception. The ordinance allows development in wetlands areas subject to certain conditions, which the Conservation Commission has outlined. That's the way the ordinance reads.
Okay, so again, in the proposal that he just made, he said it doesn't affect the character of the neighborhood or words to that effect. So is that something that can be addressed with this board? Or is that an area, some other area?
That particular statement is not part of the special exception application. There are five points of law to be met that it's listed in the Table of Uses, that it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, that it will not overload public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal systems. Special regulations are fulfilled. Okay, oh, my apologies. It does say will not impair integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood. This is about the wetlands work. And the wetlands work would not be visible to the neighborhood.
The wetlands, okay. But removing them does change the character of the neighborhood. Allowing them to build that road through those wetlands does increase the traffic. It's the whole purpose for the road, is to let those people in and out, 58 homes. I'm assuming two-car garages, 116 cars. You can't reasonably expect that not to change things. I'm just asking the panel if it is, as you just said, to consider this in your vote today.
Okay, thank you, it's noted.
Thank you.
Mr. Flatley?
Mr. Chair, perhaps I can answer his questions. The Conservation Commission is a city land use board that deals a lot more detailed, they deal a lot more details with wetland encroachments. And there is five stipulations for approval that the Conservation Commission looked at. And one of them was, you know, he's concerned about the impact to the wetlands. But one of their conditions was that they're going to remove all existing invasive species, which is a benefit to the city. They're also going to install monuments all around the areas of the wetlands. They're also proposing a revised development plan that has to go before the Conservation Commission in the first week in January. They're also doing some temporary impacts to two of the lots, but those impact areas will be returned to a natural state after this is developed, following construction. And there's also, to the maximum extent possible, all existing stone walls out there will be preserved. So that's what the applicant is doing to help meet this, have this, meet the character of the neighborhood and meet the wetland concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Flatley. Okay, Mr. Chair, before we have this gentleman speak, could I just?
Yes. I also think for the benefit of many of those in the audience that might have the questions or concerns and that aren't used to this, and since we basically talked about it with Attorney Prunier, but we didn't go through the steps like we normally do. I think if you don't mind, I'd like to just read what these nine special conditions are that have to be adhered to for the benefit of the audience. I think it might provide some context.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw, go ahead.
So there are nine wetland special conditions that Attorney Prunier said that they will adhere to. And that's part of the criteria, that we have to make sure that they are meeting for the approval of a special condition. In this case, the first one is the use cannot reasonably be avoided. Secondly, the least damaging, best practicable alternative is proposed. Third, acceptable mitigation is incorporated to minimize loss. Fourth, necessary for productive use of adjoining buildable land. Fifth, that no rare or endangered species. Sixth, adequate erosion and sedimentation control methods are being utilized. Seventh, the proposed activity shall not significantly impair wetland capacity for wildlife and fishery functions. Eighth, the project shall not impair the stability of a water body's bank. And ninth, that the wetland and buffer function of absorption capacity and storage shall not be impaired. So those are those nine criteria that I just wanted to, again, have there for everyone's, hopefully, better understanding of what we're also being asked to judge this request to.
Could I come in?
Yes, Mr. Prunier.
Just thank you, Mr. Shaw, for helping. I just wanted to throw something else out there that if you look at the nine criteria, they all speak to the use of the land around the wetlands. As opposed to, say, especially this case, there's this Impact Wetland 1, which to me goes downhill and then goes up. There's a proposal to bridge it. That, to me, is in concert with this because it's, they're proposing to bridge that to use the buildable land on the other side. And I just wanted to throw out that these nine conditions, again, all speak to the use of the land, but with limitations to preserve the wetlands as much as possible. And so just wanted to get that out, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sir?
Sorry. My name is Sean Lord. I'm the alderman-elect for Ward 8. I worked with the Conservation Commission through that area a couple of weeks back when they did that. And I don't know where, I know we don't even mention it in the conservation part, but we keep pushing animals more into the neighborhoods. And I think continuing to, you know, build over wetlands is just going to push, you know, the animal population in. The other thing I really wanted to say is people who are angry about, you know, this area being built up, Flatley's having a meeting Saturday, 9:00, 200 Innovative Way. That's where I want people to be if they're against this. And then if this passes today, to the planning board, that's the other place to go. So I just wanted to mention that. So if people wanted to speak about that, they can speak about it on Saturday. Thank you.
I'd just like to, just to comment again, like what's being reviewed tonight is the wetlands. That's not an approval for a subdivision of 58 homes. That's down the road. This is just dealing with the wetlands crossing, which is step one.
Correct, and I expected the pass. I think tonight you're probably going to pass this based on the Conservation Commission's. I mean, I talked to Sherri Dutzy, who was running that walk through the woods, and she couldn't come up with anything that was going to stop them from not, you know, passing this or at least, you know, telling you guys that it's the right thing to do. So, but I'm not a proponent of building over the wetlands, but, you know, I understand it's Flatley's property. And if they pass everything that they're supposed to pass, and it's got to go through, but then, you know, people can speak out about it later on at those other places. And I just wanted to make sure they knew that so they weren't speaking out here about it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else in the room who wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, I see a woman in the second row there.
Good evening, my name is Faye Backert at 88 Spindelwick Drive. One thing I just want to make sure that I'm clear, I understand we're focusing on the wetlands. I think it's very important, just as you addressed with the signage, changing the wetlands changes the environment, changes the neighborhood, and changes what takes place and lives around us as human beings. And I think that's something very important to focus on. The other thing, I understand you need to go through procedures on how you're doing things, and I will, I guess, confess my naivete to that. But I think isolating one from the other is not adequate. Because the wetlands is being looked at because of the development. One is not happening in isolation of the other, even though you're doing it in that way. But Flatley, I'm sorry, I don't remember the company, that is taking place, they're starting here to do something bigger. It's not like they're going to do that and that's the end of it. So I think to isolate it and not think about the other things is not appropriate as someone who lives in the neighborhood. Thank you, I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. I think I saw another hand up in the back. No? Okay. All right, so we're going to Zoom. Please use the raise hand feature in Zoom if you wish to have, if you have questions, concerns, or opposition. Okay, I see Roy and King. People can do that, raise their hand while Mr. King is speaking, and I'll take you in turn. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, I'm going to finish my call here. So I think, my major concern that I think needs to be concerned with the fact of these wetlands is what other wetlands and adjacent properties and the property as a whole that's owned by Flatley is also planned to be affected in the future. And I think that the issue here, and this has been a recurring theme for most of the meetings I've had, is there's no master plan of the development of this area. You can look at it in the scope of just these two wetlands that are being proposed to, you know, to be altered as part of this, you know, proposed building, of course, and reduce the scope of what you're looking at to that. But again, I think that these wetlands need to be looked at in the context of all the wetlands that are planned to be touched in a property because you need to look at this as a whole, not as just a subset of, you know, the environmental impact that could be happening in the future in addition to this. You know, most of the plans that have been proposed by this company have been very piecemeal. We've never gotten a big picture of what's going to be happening holistically at this property. And I think that a master plan of everything that's being planned is really appropriate in this case, especially with respect to knowing what's going to be happening with all the wetlands on this property. Because that really gives you a true picture of the environmental impact.
Thank you.
I have a question. From Mr. King. Mr. King, thank you for your testimony. I was just curious, when we talk of like master plan, or you mentioned master plan, were you thinking of a master plan of this portion of the Flatley property or a master plan for the whole Flatley property?
So we're speaking of the whole Flatley property because according to some of the proposals that are in the project, nobody's actually much respect for each other. And one of the criteria is obviously not being considered what's going to be happening in adjacent, you know, properties or adjacent plans that could be proposed in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. King? All right, David Deacon, you're up. Please give your name and address again for the record.
Yes, sir. David Deacon for St. Lawrence, Nashville, Hampshire. Sorry. So I just wanted to make a statement that I'm vehemently opposing this special variance for, you know, wetland buffer. And I know in the proposal here, you know, the activity proposed impacts cannot be reasonably avoided, but it can be reasonably avoided by not touching the wetlands to begin with, okay? Second, you, Flatley calls it conservation area. Well, it can't be conservation if you're going to build on the wetlands. So in order to conserve the area, it needs to be left alone. Second, third, according to the National Department of Environmental Services, stormwater pollution from developed land is the leading cause of pollution in this, in the nation. And it's the leading cause of pollution in New Hampshire itself. And that's due to stormwater becoming polluted by streets, farms, construction, fertilizers. So in addition to the pollutants, the area is also subject to increased flooding because of the disruption of the wetlands. Not only, and I realize that Flatley is going to, you know, he says he's going to put the wetlands back to their former glory. However, after the fact, now that you have a road and there are houses, everyone's going to want a nice green lawn, correct? Fertilizer runoff is going to be an added pollutant. Gas, diesel fuel, hydraulic fluid from construction equipment, all this stuff comes into play, okay? While you're supposedly transforming the wetland buffer into something else. So I just wanted to tell you that I oppose this wetland, you know, construction, and that's all. Thank you for your time, I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Deacon? Not seeing anybody, okay. Next is Ben Bouchard.
Hello, everybody. Ben Bouchard of 11 Cameron Drive. And just a couple of quick points. I had much more for tonight, but since we're only addressing the wetlands, as far as special, you know, exception criteria, number one, impacts that can be reasonably avoided, the access road pictured in near Impact Area 1, which crosses into Spindelwick and Shadow Brook, seems to me it can be reasonably avoided as there is another access point through Dozier Road towards the southeast corner of the map here, towards the highway. If in fact, this project of the wetlands does happen, I would think it would be reasonable to have the access point only down there to minimize the disturbance. And I was also wondering if there has been any formal wildlife study that can be made available to the public as far as the impact of what species are here, the impact of where they would go, and things of that nature. And I guess that's it, as it pertains to the wildlife part here.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any additional hands raised in Zoom. We do have a number of letters. Most of them are not relevant to the request tonight. Let's see, we have one, okay, that's Mr. Bouchard, he just spoke. We have one from Joseph and Faye Backert. We have one from Joseph and Fay Backert is protesting work in the wetlands buffer. The rest of the letter is not particularly relevant, but all of these letters will be included in the minutes on the web. Let's see, we have a letter from Michael Grove, 19 Cameron Drive. Let's see, this one is again regarding wetlands, that the neighborhood has diverse set of wildlife. Usually when the Conservation Commission studies things, they have a survey of wildlife that's there. So this is, these are for two wetlands crossings. We have one from Dan Magny of 12 Clearview Drive in opposition, but it does not discuss the wetlands. We have one from Jerry and Amy Manheim, 63 Spindelwick Drive. They're worried about the construction equipment and impact of travel on Spindelwick, Shadowbrook, and Timberline for the wetlands work. Let's see. This is from Brian and Jessica Q. of 26 Aryan Drive. But there is no relevance to the wetlands crossing here. I have James Ryan, 6 Clearview Drive. Did I say that one already? I don't think so. This is in opposition, but it does not discuss the wetlands crossing. I have one from Derek Tibbo. Doesn't give an edit. Oh, he spoke. Okay. I have one from Gene Deacon of 20 Clearview Drive in opposition, but it does not discuss the wetlands. And then Mr. Deacon spoke, we have a letter from him. So. I, let's see. I see Mr. King has his hand up again. First, I think what we do is we have the applicant attorney prunier come up and respond to the questions that were raised regarding to the wetlands crossing or a representative of attorney prunier. Please give your name and address for the record.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brannan. I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. And I just wanted to touch on a number of the comments that were just raised. We are the ones that prepared the plan, and ultimately our wetlands and soil scientists were the ones that completed the work as far as the wetlands mapping and had the meetings with the Conservation Commission. So just to touch on real quick, the plan and the need for the first wetland crossing really has a lot to do with some of the topographic constraints on the site, accessing that area and kind of negotiating the alignment through there up to Spindelwick. But more importantly, back in 2019, we, there was a neighborhood meeting that was performed for this project, and it was put on hold for quite some time, but a lot of testimony was received at that neighborhood meeting relative to trying to maximize the buffer area to the adjacent neighborhood. And because of that, we tried to pull the development closer to Daniel Webster Highway, and that ultimately resulted in that the, you know, really the need, address, improve the need for that first crossing as well. What I want to touch on too is, and certainly don't want to get into, you know, too many details with the plan, but this is a conservation subdivision which preserves 40 to 50% of the land into permanent open space and protected. So that is a benefit to wildlife versus typically a conventional plan, which could also be an option for this project. So in order to try to address a buffering to the neighborhood and also be sensitive to the wildlife and the environment, my client chose to go with a conservation-style subdivision, which I think was viewed favorably with the Conservation Commission. As Mr. Prunier stated, we are not opposed and have in fact made many of the revisions already to address the Conservation Commission's recommendations, just to show that they can be met, you know, quite readily. As far as some of the other items I just wanted to touch on, wildlife study, in the criteria, we state that this property did not come back with any Natural Heritage Bureau hits for threatened endangered species. That's an important feature and something that we ultimately have to provide. A wildlife study will eventually be done for this project as required by permitting as we move forward, state permitting through the Alteration of the Terrain Bureau in particularly. And they review, as well as the city engineering would ultimately review, stormwater to make sure that, you know, we are addressing all current standards and, you know, making any design, meeting any design requirements for mitigation as it relates to that. So those are, you know, those were raised in some of the comments. I'm not discrediting any or arguing any of those comments. We ultimately look forward to addressing a lot of those design details as we carry this project hopefully forward before the planning board in pursuit of state permits. The wetlands on this project are isolated wetlands, really, and what I mean by that is they're not high-functioning, high-value wetlands. They're forested jurisdictional wetlands, really, kind of a shallow seasonal high-water table in areas that just bleeds out and is within six inches of the surface for a period of time throughout the course of the year, which allows these wetland species of vegetation to take hold. That's why this is, these areas are jurisdictional, but there's no high-quality, high-functioning wetlands. So when somebody says, you know, let's take a look at a larger picture or a wetland complex, this really isn't that type of a wetland. It's a standard forested wetland areas, and I think that, you know, we've certainly addressed, you know, or look forward to formally addressing the Conservation Commission's comments, and we believe the plan will be environmentally, you know, friendly as we go forward. I just wanted to scroll down through some notes here to make sure I touched on everything. Certainly, conservation-style subdivisions are, you know, more favorable for animals and wildlife corridors, so, you know, my client, you know, is really happy that we can provide such a proposal. This project is situated on the very northern section of the Flatley property, which is where really all this single-family residential property abuts. So it's disconnected from, by a great distance to the, what would be Tara Heights, which is the closest developed property, which is, I think as Mr. Fox said, is probably, my guess would be about 2,500 feet away from this particular location. So these are isolated parcels located at the very northern section. This is not a, you know, it's not a fragmented proposal. It's a proposal that fits in with the uses surrounding. So, thank you very much.
Question?
Although I can't put my finger on it right now, I thought a wildlife was study, study was done a couple of years ago. I mean, and it was in our package or was nothing done? I thought I read where one had been done in like 2018 or 2019 or something.
We have done wildlife studies on this property, but a new one will have to be done for the permitting associated with this particular site and updated for the state permit submission.
And just to make sure I got it right, when you were talking about the increased buffers, like in response to the neighborhood, I look at this and I say, well, that essentially, in response to that, the houses were kind of pushed to the east and to the south to give the buffers, to give a larger buffer to the existing properties that are abutting this. Is that right?
That's correct. The plan that we originally had back in, I think it was 2019, did not offer a buffer to the adjacent neighborhood. Basically, we were proposing to build, you know, conforming lots adjacent to their development. The neighborhood, at the neighborhood meeting, the biggest comment that came from that was we would really like a natural buffer along that, the back of our properties if possible. So we modified that layout to provide a minimum of, I believe it's 100-foot buffer along that section, with the exception of where we connect, obviously. But we have played with the alignment of that connection to, you know, to try to meet all other design standards, and that's really part of the need for that first wetland impact, which we have reviewed with the Conservation Commission, and, you know, they have supported with conditions.
Thank you. And one other question. One of the stipulations in the ConCon letter was about signage, which I assume is what I would consider the kind of typical signage, which is at the edge of the buffer, there's a permanent monument, and I'd rather let you describe this, but that says the buffer starts here and no fertilizers, and what exactly does that signage say?
It typically says, you know, this is a wetland buffer area. And it's a placard that's installed oftentimes on a wooden post. And what we've agreed to, so there's kind of two parts to that recommendation, right? The first recommendation that the Conservation Commission had is our original layout showed some of these wetland buffer areas and even the wetlands extending into the proposed lots. And they said, you know, hey, timeout, we would really like to see the lots reconfigured so that there's no buffer areas and no wetlands within the proposed lots, with the exception of the two wetland crossings, and they made an exception, I think, to Lot 39 and 40. We made that revision. So that kind of in part addresses the concern of, you know, encroachment into wetlands buffers because ultimately the majority of the wetlands buffers and wetlands by default will now lie within the conservation area and within a protected area. But where we get close to the, I would say, the property lines, we have agreed to put placards along that so that it's obvious that, you know, they've gone beyond an area that they should be encroaching.
All right, thanks. I'll sit. No more questions.
Mr. Carrier, did you have a question?
Yes, I'm thinking about a comment that an earlier speaker made. So look, with regards to Shadowbrook Drive, to the extension of Shadowbrook Drive, did you look at alternatives that would have configured that extension to be south of the wetland that's impacted?
We did look at some alternatives there, but if you look at the slope, the topography in that area gets relatively steep and somewhat challenging. So what we tried to do is align the roadway so that we could meet, you know, some of those design standards. But we did, our initial proposal that I was talking about, actually, the road came in and I think connected to that cul-de-sac road, and we didn't have the road, you know, crossing, you know, down by that wetland. But in order to provide additional separation and really take the majority of the new homes and push them towards Daniel Webster Highway, we had to cross, and we had to, we have to keep, you know, another design constraint that we have is it's 750 feet to the loop road, so that forces the loop connection to be further up, and we've reviewed those design standards with the fire department preliminary and with engineering preliminary. So we look forward to making a formal design submission, but we have had preliminary, you know, meetings with those departments.
And if I could follow up, similarly, for the road, the proposed road that is closest to the turnpike, were there any alternatives explored to say create two cul-de-sacs there rather than putting the road through to avoid impact area two?
So if there was two cul-de-sacs there, then we would have a dead-end road criteria. So emergency response vehicles really wanted there to be a connection and a loop, and we could come off of that loop with cul-de-sac roads that can't exceed over, I believe it's 750 feet. So again, that crossing is critical in order to meet those design criteria, and you can see that we are crossing that particular wetland at its very, at its narrowest point, trying to minimize and avoid, and that's a criteria that we also have to meet at a state level. We have to justify, minimize, avoid. So we have to really go through all these criteria again with our, ultimately our state permit. But we're trying to balance, so if you look further to the south, you can see there's another jurisdictional wetland area near the, you know, that drains towards the Everett Turnpike, so we're avoiding any impacts to that one. We're coming through there with a road alignment and trying to negotiate, you know, the narrowest point of the wetland that we are crossing, all in the while meeting engineering standards, emergency response vehicle standards, and making sure that we comply with, you know, it's really a balance of all of the criteria.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the, from the board? Not seeing anyone. Okay. Thanks. All right. So now we get to the point where we have one and only one person who spoke with questions, concerns, or opposition. They have five minutes. It's really complicated when we have both Zoom and in person. I see Mr. King still has, he took his hand down. Okay. So is there anybody in the room who wishes to have a final five-minute rebuttal? It's optional. Not seeing any hands raised.
Mr. King has his back up.
Mr. King put his hand back up. So, Mr. King, if you wish to take five minutes and make some final comments, go ahead.
Okay. So I originally raised my hand again because I kind of wanted to add on to my first comment or question about, again, talking about a greater plan for all the development that's going to be happening in this vicinity, not just this parcel of land, but the adjacent parcels of land as well. And my question was going to be regarding, or questioning the scope of the Conservation Commission's decision on just these two wetlands. A master plan would afford the Conservation Commission the ability to look at the effect of all the development that's going to be happening in this area, and if a plan of all that development was being considered, maybe it would be determined that these wetlands may be more critical than they are when you're just looking at it in a microscope-type view and just looking at this one application here. So my question again is regarding a master plan for all the development that is planned to take place and whether or not that could be considered and scrutinized by the Conservation Commission to determine if their findings are really valid in the context of everything that's going to be happening or proposed to be happening.
Well, that would not be relevant for our discussion tonight. We can't predict what may or may not happen in the future. We have a specific request to do two wetlands crossings, and that's what we're talking about. Certainly, some of the issues that you raised could be brought up to the planning board when they discuss this development. And I think I heard you say earlier, you talked about precedent, there is no precedent involved here. We take each application on its own merits and see how it fits with the cities. So we do have the letter from the Conservation Commission approving the design with stipulations, which I believe Mr. Shaw read into the record a little while ago.
Actually, I think Mr. Carrier noted those.
Well, I didn't read the stipulation.
Oh, I will read, I will read the stipulation. Okay. So the Conservation Commission received a favorable recommendation, five to zero, at their meeting on December 7th, and their stipulations are as follows. One, invasive species shall not be introduced to the site, and all existing invasive species shall be removed by the owner-applicant. Two, Two, wetland and wetland buffer signage, monumentation shall be installed in all required locations in accordance with the City of Nashville Wetlands Ordinance and Standard Planning Department Practices. Three, a revised development plan shall be presented to and favorably reviewed by Conservation Commission prior at, to their January 4th, oh, reviewed by Conservation Commission prior at their January 4th, 2022 meeting. The revised plan shall reflect that the following lots shall have no land within the buffer, 14, 15, 32, 39, 40, 48, 50, and 51. Four, temporary impacts on lots 39 and 40 shall be permitted, but impact areas will be returned to a natural state following construction. And five, a note shall be added to the plan that to the maximum extent practicable, all existing stone walls shall be preserved. So we have in front of us the special exception to work in the wetland and wetland buffer.
Mr. Cherry, officially, you need to close out the public hearing.
We need to close up, yes, you're right, I do need to close the public hearing and open the public meeting, so, oh yes, and then of course, I'm getting ahead of myself. Mr. Boucher, any comments?
Yes, just quickly, support this application. I know that a lot of people are not familiar with this process, you know, we're more familiar with this process. I think that the applicant has provided us with everything that we need, is attested to the wetland special conditions, again, the Conservation Commission's favorable recommendation with the five stipulations, again, you know, says to me that this was seriously looked at, and with that, again, just simply, I'm going to go in favor of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Carrier.
A couple of things I'd like to highlight, kind of in response also to a couple of the comments, I think by faith, I didn't catch your last name, and David Deacon about changing the wetlands or fertilizer runoff, I think stipulation three by the Conservation Commission is huge, which is no land lots in the buffer. I've been on this board long enough in the ConCon before that, that when folks have their lots in a buffer, they don't get respect. You get sheds on them, you get swimming pools on them, you get fertilizer, all the leaves are dumped in it. So I'm enthusiastic that the Conservation Commission has asked that and the applicant is going to do it, because I think that that goes a long way to actually helping preserve the wetland. The other thing is, I see pretty much a clear trade-off on this plan, and the trade-off is, you know, there's a request for two wetland crossings here, and a large part of that is because there's been this hundred-foot or so plus-or-minus buffer that's being proposed to be maintained behind all the lots on Spindelwick. I mean, all of those lots on Spindelwick could have a home right in their backyard and with no buffer. I think this is a better plan than that, I mean, I feel that the applicant has listened to the neighborhood, this was a couple, several years ago, and as a result of that, things are pushed east, and for the bulk of the residents, that's a better deal, albeit there's two wetland impacts here, and I do feel that the two wetland impacts are minimized as much as possible in the skinniest part. So, in short, I'm in favor of the plan as it's proposed.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I also just want to note again for the public's education that this board is, we're looking at what's called a special exception, which is, has a kind of a lower by bar criteria than the variance-type requests that we were speaking to earlier, and generally, if the criteria are met, then we, this board essentially must approve the application, and so, I think that's what we see here, that there's, you know, there's some pretty detailed information regarding the testimony that wasn't spoken through verbally, but is in the written application regarding meeting those nine wetland special conditions, so the plan has already been well thought out. I also, I did really appreciate, and especially to miss my car, I kind of pursued that question a little bit, but I had a similar kind of thought about, well, why not, like especially in void impact area one, and as we come to learn and understand all of these trade-offs that the applicant is trying to work through about, you know, emergency vehicle access, about minimizing the crossings, about maintaining the buffer to the Spindelwick Drive homes, dealing with, you know, even proximity where all these other concerns are, and by squeezing the lots in and doing the conservation type of subdivision, that allows for not having all those homes right up against the, especially the Spindelwick Drive properties. So, it's, I think there's been a lot of care and thought and response to this, in this process, and I think this is a reasonable request, and I believe that the right things are being done, and there's plenty of opportunity, as noted, for the planning board process, for people to still weigh in with their broader concerns about the project. So, from the aspect of what this board needs to consider, I believe that the conditions will be met and that we should approve this, and I will support it.
Thank you, Mr. McCarry.
I also support the special exception request, I'm satisfied that sufficient effort was made to minimize the impact to the wetland, to the wetlands to allow the property to be used for purposes for which it's zoned. I would also say though that I am satisfied that the impacted wetlands are isolated, relatively isolated, wetlands of, you know, relatively low value. Were these wetlands more extensive, or if I believe that there were, or there was evidence that there were downstream impacts, then that would definitely be something that I would consider relevant, that would be something I would, and I would imagine the Conservation Commission would see as relevant as well, and although it's probably not relevant to this, and I could be in error, but to Mr. King's point, I do believe that the Department of Environmental Services when reviewing wetlands impacts will look at cumulative impacts on adjacent properties under common ownership when they consider judge and fill permits, so, at some point, that is an issue that would be considered, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Canacas.
I don't have anything to add, I think the conditions have been met, so I'm in support.
Thank you, Ms. McKay.
When I look at this and I look at our actual criteria here, what we need to be looking at is strictly the wetlands, we can't look at any other impacts, it's almost like taking a picture and explaining to a child or anyone, we can't color outside the lines, and if we were to look at other impacts, we would be coloring outside those lines, and so, the impact to the wetlands has been addressed by the expert on that, and we rely on that information on the Conservation Commission. And so, based on those thought processes and based on everything that has been said previously, I'm going to support the wetland piece of this application and this special exception.
Thank you, and I, like my colleagues, believe that the applicant has done a good job of designing the wetlands crossings to be minimal, and we have the support of the Conservation Commission, so I'm inclined to approve this as well. So, would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for John J. Flatley, company owner, eternal Gerald Prunier, Prunier and Pearlman, applicant, El Dozer Road, Sheet A, Lots 58, 768, 67, 68, and 990, Sheet 132, Lots 1 and 85, and Sheet 114, Lot 231, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code, Section 190-115, to work in a critical wetland and wetland buffer for the development of a conservation subdivision consisting of fifty-eight single-family homes along with associated improvements in the R18 and R40 zones from Ward 8. We find that it is listed in the Table of Uses, we find it will not create undue traffic, congestion, or undue impaired pedestrian safety, we find it will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer, or other municipal systems, we find that special regulations are fulfilled, and we find that it will not impair integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents. By testimony, we found that wetland special conditions have been met, the nine wetland special conditions have been met. We also find the other special conditions is the Conservation Commission, special conditions is part of this approval from the meeting dated December 7th, 2021, this five special conditions, five conditions, stipulations that we have already discussed and read out loud. So with that, again, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Thank you, and Mr. Shaw, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor, I'm sorry, I have myself muted.
That's okay, we've all been there. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote? Mr. Shaw votes in favor. Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Aye, Mr. Leno, vote in favor, it's five to nothing, the special exception has been granted. As you know, there's a thirty-day window of appeal.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you too. We have, again, a draft of the calendar next year, which we voted on last meeting, and we're going to vote on it again. I think that's the process. Does anybody see any problem with the calendar entries as shown here?
No.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the draft calendar for 2022. Thank you, Mr. Carrier, do I have a second? Mr. Shaw? Thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Aye, Mr. Leno, vote in favor, okay, so the calendar has been approved. We have minutes from November 23rd, does anybody see any problem with the minutes? Or any edits or changes? I'm not seeing any, I have a motion to approve the minute, Mr. Shaw, thank you, do I have a second? Mr. Boucher, thank you. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote? Mr. Shaw votes in favor. Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
I'm in favor.
And aye, Mr. Leno, vote in favor, five to nothing, okay, the minutes have been approved. We do not have an agenda for the next meeting because we don't have a second meeting in December, so I undertake a motion to adjourn. Mr. Shaw, thank you, and so we are adjourned at 9:13 PM.
Happy holidays.